It's now 6:03 and I will call this regular board meeting to order. Welcome to everyone here. Item number two, Establishment of a Quorum. Let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Dr. Rivera and Adrian Gonzalez. Item number three, Opening Prayer. Dr. Leo.
The invocation will be led by Iris Hernandez, a social worker from Be Garza Middle School.
Heavenly Father, we unite today at this time, asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin the Board of Trustees' meeting. Lord, you not only give wisdom to leaders, you are wisdom itself. Give the school board wisdom to steer Westlaco ISD on the right path. Bless them and their families. Help our trustees know and believe in the gifts you have bestowed upon them, both individually and collectively. Fill all our distinguished members with your grace, Lord, as they make important decisions that will affect the students, parents, and staff of Westlaco ISD. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we listen with an open heart. Keep us mindful of the many opportunities and blessings. In faith and hope, we trust in your presence and guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Item number four, Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge.
Yes, Pledge of Allegiance will be led today by Lauren Elizabeth Trevino and Berenice Rojas. If you'd like to please stand up. Lauren Elizabeth Trevino is the daughter of Steve and Elizabeth Trevino. She is an eighth grade student at Be Garza Middle School, where she has earned Superior Honor Roll for the first and second six weeks. Lauren is the president of the school's National Junior Honor Society. She is also involved in sports, UIL, and is a member of the Cats Band. Lauren's goals are to academically excel at Westlaco High School and earn a position in the top ten percent of her, or the top ten of her class. She hopes to someday become a police officer and honorably serve her community. If her parents are here, can they please stand up? And we also have Berenice Rojas, and she is the daughter of Virgilio and Ana Rojas. She is an eighth grade student at Be Garza Middle School and is the Student Council President. Aside from student council, Berenice is actively involved in the school's anti-bully club and participates in UIL as well. As a high school student, she plans to continue her involvement in various clubs and organizations and hopes to earn a spot in the top ten. After graduating from high school, Berenice's goals are to attend college and become a dermatologist. If her parents are here, can they please stand up? You guys ready? All right. You can step over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all for being here today. Congratulations again to you and to your parents. Item number five, Awards and Recognizations.
Well, tonight we want to recognize the faculty member who recently returned from Galveston after receiving the 2016 State ESL Teacher of the Year from the Texas Association for Bilingual Education. ESL teacher, Dr. Carolina Lopez, was given the prestigious award for her tireless work with our students at Dr. Armando Cuellar Middle School. Dr. Lopez has also demonstrated strong leadership with the bilingual program and has contributed to staff development in our district. T A B E is an organization that strives to maintain educational policies and effective bilingual, bicultural programs that promote equal educational opportunities for ESL students. Dr. Carolina Lopez, can you please come forward? And this is the award that she recently won. Lopez.
Dr. Lopez, it is our information that you are now in contention for the national award?
Yes. I'm excited.
Yes.
I'm excited, definitely.
Well, you have brought great pride and honor to this district and to this community and to the teaching profession. Dr. Lopez, I have to brag, is originally from La Jolla. I know her. In fact, my first encounter with her, I'd like to share, was she was a fourth grade student who came to speak at a principal's meeting. I remember then being so impressed, and she has certainly lived up to the expectations of her family, her own as well, because I know she has set high standards for herself. And we will be seeing you back here when you receive the national ESL Teacher of the Year. We're very proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Tonight, we'd also like to recognize our high school bands for their outstanding performance at the annual Battle of the Bands known as Pigskin. If we have some representatives, if they can please stand up from Westlaco East and Westlaco High School. Actually, let's have you guys move forward. Come forward, please. So, the Westlaco High School Panther Corps received a Division One rating and advanced to area for the sixth year in a row. Representing the Corps are Head Drum Major Karen Jimenez, with Assistant Drum Major Delcia Riojas, Freddie Lopez, and Manny Lopez. Representing the Color Guard Officers are Captain Leslie Ibarra and Captain Amber Merla. Band Director is Jose Valenzuela. How about a big hand for the Panther Corps and their Division One rating? Is there a director here? Is he here?
I don't see him.
Base sitters. Also, congratulations. Now, Westlaco East Wildcat Regiment received a Division One rating and advanced to area, and this is the seventh trip to area in the last fifteen years for the Wildcat Regiment. Head Drum Major is Jacob Bloss, with Assistant Drum Majors Alyssa Aguilar and Lisbeth Sanchez. Representing the Color Guard Officers are Captain Carolina, Carolina De Leon, and Co-Captain Janice Fan. Band Director is Ron Bissett. How about a big hand for the Wildcat Regiment? Band Director, Ron Bissett. And this is the sixth time that they have finished in the top ten for the Wildcat Regiment. Is that correct, Mr. Bissett? Sixth time?
This time, but we have six times.
They have before, okay. Six, six times they have finished in the top ten. Congratulations, band students.
Their parents can be recognized.
If your parents, if their parents are here, can y'all please stand up?
We know there are many, many hours of practice and six o'clock early morning wake-up calls, so, parents, congratulations to all of you on the leadership your children have provided to our, to our bands, and congratulations to the students for overcoming, for being there, and for your diligence and doing a great job. Congratulations to all of you guys.
David.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for stopping me. At 6:05, let the record reflect that Adrian Gonzalez joined the meeting, and let the record also reflect that at 6:13, Dr. Rivera joined the meeting. Thank you, gentlemen. Carlos, did you have another one?
Proclaimations.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number six, Proclamation for Parental Involvement Day, November 17, 2016.
All right, so, is there anybody here from the parental involvement program?
Department.
Please stand up, because we have a proclamation we'd like to read for you. Whereas the National Parental Involvement Day will be celebrated in Westlaco Independent School District, November 17, 2016, and whereas school board president David Fuentes will be the honorary chairperson of the community focusing on Parental Involvement Day, and whereas WISD promotes parental involvement targeting student success in the public schools as, at the grassroots level, integrating community awareness in a united effort with representatives throughout the community, now therefore be it resolved that David Fuentes, president of the Westlaco School Board, does hereby support and proclaim the day of November 17, 2016, Parental Involvement Day.
Everything starts at the house, so, thank you all for being our outreach to our parents and to our, for our children. So, thank you for all that you do and being there. My heart is in parental involvement. That's where my mom was for so many years, so, I know how, how important it is to reach out and touch those families. Thank you for all you do, and continue the great work. Thank you very, very much. Item number eight, Superint, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Item number seven, Public Comments, and we have Mr. Javier Salinas. Javier, I know that you're an employee here, but for the record, go ahead and state your name. I don't, you need me to read the disclaimer?
No, sir, I have it memorized. Javier Salinas, 515 Short Line, Edinburgh, Texas. Mr. President, Members of the Board, Dr. Leo. Today, it's an important day for Westlaco ISD because we want to introduce two guests, two new guests to the, well, one new guest to the district, because the board is so progressive. A few months ago, we talked about acquiring a second K-9 to assist the quadrant of Westlaco East, Cuellar, Mary Hoag, South Palm Gardens, Horton, along with all the elementaries, and this K-9 will be starting work tomorrow here at Westlaco ISD. This K-9 will take care of thousands of kids, and I want to thank Dr. Leo, the members of the board, for being so progressive in the safety of our students that we made, we were able to make this into reality. So, members of the board, thank you. At this time, I want to introduce our two Canines. Zamba is our first K-9 that we have. Where's Zamba? Okay. Zamba is going to be stationed at Westlaco High, along with Be Garza Central. Where's Zamba? She not here yet?
On her way in.
She'll, Zamba will be, is going to be stationed full-time now, Westlaco High, Be Garza.
Hold on, Mr. Salinas. The board has not approved this new hire yet.
No.
You're jumping the gun a little bit, but...
Zamba's already here.
Let's assume we're going to name a new employee tonight.
Zamba was already on...
Zamba's already on contract.
Zamba's on the payroll already. Okay, got you.
And Mrs. Wells, you cannot take the puppy home. No. Yeah.
I've been to several of the schools with Zamba, and Zamba has been in lots of competitions, beating DPS and Border Patrol dogs all throughout the valley, so Zamba does an amazing job. And the possible new acquisition is Zeus.
Zeus?
Zeus.
Zeus, wow, good name. Can't say no to a god.
Yeah. I hope they're, I hope they're not scared by the hall lights.
They're very social dogs. They're very, very socials.
I think they're coming.
Well, thank you, Mr. Salinas, for bringing the, the dogs in to, for them to be introduced to our community.
That's Zeus, right there.
Oh, mine.
All right.
This is...
This is Zeus.
Oh, Zeus, the new one.
And this is Zamba, right there.
Yes. Hi.
Hello. Zeus, we checked your references, and we're looking forward to taking you on the agenda tonight, but we wanted to introduce the two dogs to our community. We thought it would be a great idea to, to bring them out and put it on, on record and let the community see that, that we have resources here to, to help keep our children safe at schools. These, these dogs are worker dogs. They, all day long, that's what they do. They consider it playtime, but they're really doing us a tremendous service by protecting our kids from dangers, so, thank you for being in charge of this. Thank you for taking this opportunity to introduce all of us to these wonderful dogs, and we obviously wish you guys well. Give them some extra treats, but, but thank you for bringing them by. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I want one.
Now you did.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas, for coordinating that for us. Item number eight, Superintendent's Report. We got student enrollment, insurance, and an update on NAP Medical Center. Dr. Leo.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, Members of the Board, in your pocket, you should have the enrollment report. We'll put that up on the screen for the members of the audience. As you can see from those counts, as of the 12th week of this school year, we have 17,420 students, which represents 470,000, 470, 470 students less than we had on the 12th week of enrollment for the previous school year. You will note, if you look at the far right-hand column, the differences, obviously, those in parentheses being shortages, the differences from the prior year to this year at the 12th week of enrollment. This afternoon, we have spent additional time, we, the staff and I have been in conversations for a number of weeks about the loss of student enrollments and about what we can do as a district to bring back those that have gone to other schools or those who have not as yet reported to our campuses. This afternoon, I did direct the principals of those schools showing a lower enrollment of 40 or above to designate a staff member at their campus to begin the, the enhanced task of identifying the students that they have lost, and if possible, being able to track reasons why students have left the campuses. And so, I hope to have a future report for you. Those schools having 40 or less include Roosevelt, Sam Houston, Silva, Gonzalez, Margot, and North Bridge Elementary, as well as Cuellar Middle School and East High School. So, those schools will begin that diligent effort. I visited also with Mr. George Lopez of the migrant office, and I would like to thank Mr. Rick Flores and Mr. Juan Ruelas, who assist us and who constantly keep us abreast of these counts. And, and all of these gentlemen, together with Mr. Javier Salinas, who daily helps principals track their attendance records as well, their reports. And so, we have been in conversation with any number of them or all of them collectively. The migrant department has committed to do an additional search, as we did at the beginning of the school year, when we went out to look for students that were no-shows, as we called them. We're going to do another round of those, but there is general agreement that our migrant population has been slow in returning this year. This time last year, we had a higher number of students that had already returned. We don't know what the reason is that they have not come back yet, those that haven't, but we are pursuing those questions. And so, we will have further information to you as it becomes available. On the next page where we show the...
Andres, do you want to...
Sir?
So, Andres, what is, financially, what's the impact of this? We lost 463. How many, how much money is that?
At this time, since the budget's based on ADA and not enrollment...
No, I understand, but if you had...
We are okay.
Let me finish, let me finish. So, if you had these 463 back in the district, what is the impact of the loss in millions of dollars?
Can I give you a number, because it's based on ADA?
Approximately?
I don't know.
About 7,000 per student? Approximately?
For ADA, for ADA, that's just enrollment.
I understand, I understand. But approximately, you can't give me a figure? You're the business manager.
If all that was ADA, it would be about $3,000, $300,000, sorry.
More than about $2 million?
$3 million, sorry.
$3 million, okay.
If it was ADA, but right now, we're okay.
I understand. Thanks.
And your point is well-taken, Dr. Rivera, which is why we want to continue not letting much more time pass. If we can get a, a handle on why it is that students are leaving, then we will try to mitigate that loss as much as possible, because in the end, it does translate into additional revenue. And so, on the second page, again, the breakdown by grade levels, you can see that at elementary schools, that represents 346 fewer students, at middle schools, 58, at high schools, 29, the alternative campus, 30. And, and the Elf Academy, of course, helped us mitigate that loss a little bit.
Excuse me one second. Andres, can you come back up to the microphone, please? Can you remind us what our budget was based off of?
16,180. 16,100.
16,100?
1,100, yes.
So, even though we're at 17,420, I understand that that's enrollment, not ADA?
Yes. The ADA for the first two, six weeks was 16,105. So, right now, that's why I say we're okay.
So, we're still on budget?
Because we budgeted low ADA.
We did budget a very conservative number, so...
Yes.
We haven't lost any money off of our budget so far, right?
No. We could, but right now, we haven't.
But we're going to lose eventually, because you have 470 kids. If you had these kids in the district, that would be ADA.
Yeah, we'd be more money than we could get, yes.
And you're budgeting for these kids in your schools.
Yeah, we could get more money, correct.
So, you get more money at the end of the year.
Yes.
So, so, bottom line, you know, there's a problem here.
We're not getting more money that we could. But we budgeted what, we're okay.
And, Mr. Salinas, what is the figure, the last figure we had on the monitoring that you're doing of attendance at the campuses?
Right now, this week, we're up $373,000 from last year at this time.
How much?
We're up $373,000 this year in the monetary equivalent of our attendance. Two years ago, we lost 1.6 million. Last year, we lost $667,000, but right now, we're up about $300,000 from the same time last year in attendance. The principals are doing a great job.
Our ADA?
Yes.
I want to add, Doctor, on our, during our interviews, we had the opportunity to speak several other individuals that are very involved in this, in the attendance, and we came to learn that other districts lost in the thousands of students, not hundreds like, like we did. So, I believe Edinburgh lost around two, approximately 2,000 students, and the PSJA was also in, in those numbers. I'm not sure about McAllen, but I do remember those two districts losing a lot more students than we did. Doesn't mean that we don't have to try and, and work hard to get them all back, and as we discussed in a meeting, that we need to go after all our students, bring them all back, or as many as we can.
That is correct. We see those figures as well that reflect that other districts, most districts have lost enrollment, but you're, again, you are correct that this will not keep us from working ever so hard at trying to retrieve as many of those that appear to be lost to us. We will work at bringing them back. Last week, I had the first of three advisory council meetings. I met with the student advisory group. Tomorrow, I meet with the faculty superintendent's advisory group, and the following week with community members. And I asked the school, the student group, because after speaking to them about the overall operations of a district and how we get monies, how we lose monies, and I led to the topic of friends of theirs or family members who have, who live in Westlaco but are attending schools elsewhere, did they know why those students were going to other schools? And there, there were some interesting answers, and as I said, I will post the same question to the other two advisory groups coming tomorrow and the following week, and we'll bring a report to you then, as well.
Thank you.
We're trying to cover all aspects that we can. Next, we have a report on the self-funded health program, and Mr. De La Rosa will present. And he will also present on the NAP Medical Center update.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Leo, Members of the Board. At the last meeting, Mr. Fuentes, you had asked for a, a three-year comparison from our health plan, and we would be evaluating the 13, 14, 14, 15, and 15, 16 plan years, respectively. So, the first bar you have here is a, is a, basically a trend, as you will, of actual medical claims, hospital claims, doctor visits, et cetera. As you can see, that in, usually in September, you see these, these numbers start to spike as people have procedures. In the summer, we get, those bills start rolling in in, in September and October, and then the trend will kind of go down in November and December, and then kind of come back up in January and February, when you had people that were employees that were off during the, the Christmas break, getting procedures, and, and those bills start to roll in, like I said, in January and February. The only anomaly that you see on this, on this graph is the 13, 14 school year in May, where the claims just went down tremendously. That, if you all recall, back then, our TPA at the time had stopped paying claims. There were some issues that we were having with our administrative services agreement. They were trying to change it, and like I said, there were no claims paid for that month. And then, of course, things start to come back up to trend. And then, of course, the, last year, we had a, we had a spike in medical claims, and that is due to the fact, of course, you know, we, we had several individuals hit the individual specific deductible. We had some catastrophic losses, if you will. And I'll get into the actual numbers here in a, in a future, in a, in another slide. The prescription summary, as you can tell, every, it's, everything's trending at about, you know, 2% to 10% of an increase, and this is, of course, the cost of prescription drugs. As we've seen reports in the media, the drug costs are starting to rise, and there's, you know, quite a lot of, a lot of discussion about that in the area. So, when you see commercials for Humira and you see commercials for Embrel on TV, those drugs are extremely expensive. And, of course, as, as a plan, we do provide them. The next one is the slide is the administrative summary, going back three years. The only administrative fee that we've realized, the increase, is our stop-loss insurance premium. As you know, that as we have higher claims on the specific stop-loss claims, of course, just like anything else, if you have auto insurance, if you have a lot of accidents, your rates are going to increase. And certainly, this is the case with our stop-loss insurance. As you can see, the only two big also abnormalities on this data is November and December from 13, 14, and 14, 15. This was due to the transitional reinsurance fee that we're forced to pay through the Affordable Care Act. Finally, in summary, we break down the costs of the last three plan years, respectively. 13, 14, the plan spent approximately $13 million. In 14, 15, approximately $15 million or $14.8 million. And then, finally, last year, the 15, 16 plan year, we've had a lot of discussion with it. We did have a catastrophic year, if you will, and we, in the final... discussion with it. We did have a catastrophic year, if you will, and we, the final tally ended up at 16.5 million. So, we did make some adjustments to the plan. We did increase our funding. We made some other changes to the employee contributions. We did, of course, in fact, enhance benefits by adding employee plus one tier. So, right now, as, for the month of September and October of 16, 17, we're doing a little bit better, as far as claims go. I didn't bring that data, but certainly I can send it in the update. Any questions so far? This is the usual slide that's presented for the workers' compensation program. We're doing a little bit better here on our work comp program. So far, year to date, we've, we've had 24 claims filed versus last year, the same time would be 29. We've incurred approximately $90,000. This includes everything from claims, prescriptions, administration, indemnity services, everything through October, new, new claims that we've incurred, 90,000 versus last year, 85,000. Total paid in October, inclusive of all plan years, was 34,775 versus last year at this time, was 77,766. So we've got about, we've got total of $447,000 in reserves. So, the workers' comp plan is looking very well.
Is the reserves going up, Mike, or holding steady?
Excuse me?
Is the reserves going up a little bit, or is it?
It is going up this plan year, because we did budget, I believe, Andres, 750,000 was included, was budgeted for this year. So, we're seeing a slight increase in our reserves.
Okay.
Finally, the next, if nothing else, I'll move on to the next slide. As you know, we've been in negoti, or actually, we've actually, we've kinda been at a standstill with the local hospital. So basically, what, what happened was this, is that, of course, we have a three-tier benefit plan. And just so the public will know where we're at, what's going on, we have a three-tier benefit program, and we have a tier one, a tier two, and a tier three, which is our EPO, a PPO, and of course, out-of-network. So, going back to November of 15, the plan realized that the deals that we had in place with the local hospital was not favorable enough for us to incentivize employees to go to this facility. We did negotiate with them for over a year. They declined, so finally, we had to make a decision for move them to the tier one, or the PPO, EPO, to the tier two, or the PPO, which is still in-network, okay? The hospital refused. They made the decision that they were going to be out-of-network. So, that's begun the situation that we've been in for the past few months. So, on October 3, the board graciously, if I may, took action to temporarily include NAP in the EPO while negotiations proceeded. The next day, we advised the hospital of their actions. We heard back from them on October 7, which was late Friday afternoon. They basically responded and said that they also wanted the Harlingen facility included in the EPO, and in addition, that they wanted both facilities to be included for the lifetime of any potential contracts. Of course, that is above and beyond what the board graciously approved that day. So, a few days later, on the 11th, we did have a call with them, and they were advised of what the board had approved, and that what their requests were, were outside the realm of what was approved. We mentioned that there was no mention of the Harlingen facility, nor their request that both facilities be listed in any and all member materials and directories for the lifetime of the contract. We weren't considering at that time, because that is what, outside of what the board approved. Moving forward, on October 19, the hospital withdrew its demand that the Harlingen facility be included in the EPO, and they offered a 2% decrease in current rates for NAP facility. They were considering this, a new agreement that would not expire December 31. They, they demand, or they requested that this 2% decrease, or decrease be effective as of November 1, and then all claims incurred in September and October would be processed at an out-of-network facility, or at out-of-network benefits, if you will. Again, the next day, we advised them that their offer was outside the course and scope of what the board approved. The approval was to temporarily include them in the EPO while we negotiate these rates. Accepting a 2% decrease at the time was not in the best financial interest of the plan, nor was it what the board approved. So, that being said, as of November 10, actually, there was some communication between the hospital and our third-party administrator, Freuds Benefit Administrators, earlier this afternoon. They had advised if we had reconsidered, or if we had taken any action regarding their 2% offer. Of course, there was not any change since then. So, as of right now, open claims at the hospital from September 1 through, through Friday, actually, there are 17 open claims, or 17 pending claims with the hospital, versus last year, 263. So, obviously, why would they, why they would continue this type of conduct during this time is, is quite frankly, beyond me. But that is where we stand right now with NAP. I know there's a item in executive session later on, and I'll have some more information for you at that time.
At this time, does anybody have any questions regarding the superintendent's report, whether it's student enrollment insurance, or the update on the NAP Medical Center?
Thank you, Mike, for your presentation. Like you mentioned, we have an item in closed meeting tonight, item 32, deliberation regarding NAP Medical Center. For us to consider some of the other items that are being proposed, or at least some of this, because it's a contract negotiations, we have to consider this an executive session, not an open session.
That's correct, David. We need to make sure that we keep our negotiating leverage kosher at this point.
Right. So, with that being said, the purpose of having you make a short presentation tonight was to just inform the community and employees that we're wanting to move forward, and that we are encountering some roadblocks. But we're in hopes of trying to get that resolved here very, very shortly. So hopefully, tonight's meeting will be productive in the sense that we can start moving forward to some resolution with this. So, thank you for your update. We'll, we'll hopefully get this concluded soon.
Thank you, gentlemen.
One more question before you go. I've asked you for an update, for a letter to our, all our employees, a monthly newsletter, and I don't know whether you've advised them of what their options are at this point regarding another hospital here in Weslaco, or what their options are. Because this NAP does not seem to be gonna be working out very-
Yes, sir. There was a, a letter that was sent out to all the employees advising of what had been going on. There was also in the employee newsletter, I believe, that went out la, I don't believe the one for November has gone out yet. But as you can tell by the claims, the employees are aware of the situation, and they're taking steps to seek other facilities where it's not gonna be as financially burdensome to them.
Okay. Well, just keep, keep our employees informed via newsletter or something.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? With respect to the budget and the enrollment, just ask that you try to be as fiduciarily responsible as possible, understanding that our enrollment is not where it should be, or where we want it to be. Obviously, we're still within the capacity of the budget that we prepared, but there are opportunities being lost, and I think that's of great concern. We also have staffing in place right now to, I think, accommodate for more students. So we need to be very careful about hiring, moving forward until we're able to justify, you know, the, the need. So with that, just be responsible with our budget, knowing that we're very, very tight right now. I think that's an important point. Item nine, consent agenda, starting with my left. Dr. Rivera, you have anything?
None.
Adrian?
No, sir.
Oscar?
No, sir.
I don't have anything, Mo?
I have nothing.
Andrew?
18C.
18C, all right. And Mr. Nieto?
Number eight and number 16, just for information purposes.
Eight and 16. So we are from, pulling from the consent agenda, items eight, 16, and 18C. Outside of that, do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez, and second by Oscar Caballero to approve as recommended by administration. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Doctor, please make sure that the people that have generously given money to our schools in support of our children, that they be recognized with a thank you note, whether that comes from central office or from our schools, please make sure that we give them the appropriate thank yous.
Yes, sir. Rest assured.
Item number eight, approval of independent contract between Weslaco Independent School District and Educational Achievement Services, Inc., to provide iShine program for migrant students. Mr. Nieto?
Dr. Leo, this is just for information purposes. What is iShine? Is it a new, a new program, or?
And I will, I will defer to Mr. Lopez. It is a new program.
Okay. And I know it's specifically for migrants, so that's why I'm asking.
I'm looking for that item.
Good evening, Dr. Leo, members of the board, and board of trustees. With me is the Director of Federal Migrant Programs. I have Maria Mendoza. Ms. Mary Mendoza is a licensed master level social worker. iShine has been, we've contracted with iShine for the past nine to 10 years, to be exact.
Excuse me?
So it's not new.
Okay.
And this is designed for priority, for service migrant students that have specific psychosocial, emotional problems, real intense home environment issues. So, you know, every year, we take a group of female migrant students, and also male migrant students, and professionals work directly with them. And so, you know, in order to, to better address their needs, I mean, this, these are, without getting specific out of respect to these students, you know, just in general, we'll, we'll call it home environment psychosocial issues.
And this is ongoing, or this is just a few days?
Nope.
It's a three-day program, sir.
It's a three-day program?
Yes.
And, and this is where Dr. Kick Bush is a motivational presenter?
Yes. Well, she actually has the consultants come by, come to this workshop. It's a total of four consultants.
And how many?
Four.
Four.
And how many students is it affecting?
Forty, oh, for this conference, it's 40 students.
Forty?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Any other questions, Jim?
Mr. Nieto, would you like to make a motion on item eight?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nieto to approve as presented by administration, second by Andrew Gonzalez. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Item 16, approval of memorandum of understanding between Weslaco Independent School District and the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley Educational Leadership Partnership to Support Preparation of School Principals.
Again, Dr. Leo, here is just information on what type of program it is. Is it a-
It is a master's in educational leadership, leading towards a principal certificate. It is a 30-hour program, over a course of one and a half years, and we have been working with Dr. Velma Manchaca, who is the head of the Educational Leadership School at UTRGV. And we are working together with, it'll be, she refers to it as a tri-city project, because it, it really is tri-district. The Donna School District, Mercedes, and Weslaco. Each will have five, Mercedes will have five, Weslaco will have seven. I'm not sure, Donna, how many will be participating.
Would these be teachers, or assisted principals?
They're teachers, who are working on a master's in ed leadership.
Have we set criteria? How are we gonna select those teachers?
We did, and we have already selected them.
Okay.
We did put together a, an application process, and with the assistance of Ms. Segura and Ms. Elizabeth Alanis, we, there were 17 applicants. There were some that already had their master's program, so we prioritized the teachers. And of that group, there is at least one from each of the schools that applied. I think Weslaco High School is the only campus that had two, because they had more applicants in the process. And today, Ms. Alanis met with Dr. Manchaca and the cohort for Weslaco that will be participating. The classes will alternate between the three schools.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nieto to approve as, as presented by administration, and second by Andrew Gonzalez. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. 18B, approval of proposal award, I'm sorry, 18C. Approval of proposal awards, C, glass service and repairs, district-wide rebid, proposal number 1709-10. Andrew?
Andres, can you just refresh my memory, why we went back out to a rebid?
We hadn't gotten enough responses the first time. No, we didn't get responses the first time.
None at all?
None at all.
Second time? How many?
Two. We only got two this time. But we, there's company that we have worked well with before. The primary vendor, we have used it several times, the transportation, and many of the prominent are happy with what they do.
Mr. Garcia, you okay with it? Are they local?
Excuse me?
Are they local? Yes?
Well, the, the prices vary depending on the size of the glass.
Local.
I'm sorry.
Are they here, from home, here, Weslaco?
One is in Harlingen, and one is in Weslaco. They have offices in Weslaco and in McAllen, the primary.
Okay.
And the other one's in Harlingen.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Andrew Gonzalez to approve as recommended by administration, and second by Mr. Nieto. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote so by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Section 10, discussion items. Item number two, interim financial reports for the month of October 2016.
For President, Dr. Leo, members of the board, in the financial report for October 2016, on local revenues, we budgeted almost 25 million. We have received only 262,716, which is 1%. State revenues, we budgeted 129 million. We have received 25,164,000, which is 19.49%. Federal revenues, we budgeted 14.7 million. We have received 1.5 million only, and that is 10.5%. Overall, the revenues are 20, almost 27 million dollars received, which is 16%. On expenditures, all the expenditures budgeted at 165,952,000. We have received, we have spent, I'm sorry, spent or encumbered through August 30, October 31, 25,640,000, which constitutes 15.45%. So far, we're doing good. The two months constitute 16.6% of the budget, so the revenues are right below, and the expenditures as well. The revenue will continue. October had very little on tax collections. November had a bit more. And in December, in January, the tax collections pick up a lot. Any questions?
Andres, on 36, did you budget more than last year?
A little bit more, sir, yes.
How much is a little more?
About 200,000 more.
Okay.
We didn't budget as much, because we did, last time, we budgeted 600,000, so we, 300,000, and that had to do with supply, you know, from things like that, so-
Yeah, you had to add some more.
It would help, so they don't have to buy as much these-
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions on item 22?
You feel good? You're on task?
Yes, sir, we're okay.
Okay, if not, was that it, Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Item 23, acknowledgement of Vidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for September 2016, current and delinquent taxes. Are you gonna do October as well? All right, so item 24, acknowledgement of Vidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for October 2016, current and delinquent taxes. So you'll be doing 23 and 24?
Yes.
Thank you.
On item 23, in September collections, all they had was prior years, in, for 2016, which is part of the 16, 17 year, they collected 2.32%, and comparing that to the previous year, it was, which was 3.12, it was a .8% less. For October, on item 24, they had current tax collections, they collected 171,200, which is .7%. The prior year, they only collected .4%. So comparing the two years on current taxes, it was a .3% more. For prior year levies, they collected 212,397 through October 31, which is 4.89%. And the previous year, they collected 6.41, which is 1.5% less. Any questions?
And this is the big month of tax collections, November and December?
Well, October's a long one.
November?
November picks up a little, December's a heavy month, so is January.
What is your goal again, on both, current and delinquent?
27.
27?
On current, and 20% on delinquent.
20% delinquent.
Okay. Any further questions? Is that it, Mr. Sanz?
Yes, sir. Those two years.
Thank you. Item 25, presentation of the 2016 Certified Property Tax Rule.
Item 25, at least as a discussion item, it should actually be in adding the needs approval. Someone out the board to approve it, please. This is the presentation-
I don't think- I don't think we can approve it if it's not a.
Kenny?
It's up for discussion, it's up for discussion only, and I don't see it on the, on the possible action items, so no.
We're probably going to have a special board meeting on Tuesday of next week?
Right?
Yes.
We have an agenda item we have to take care of, so if you want to add it to that, to that agenda, we'll go ahead and take action on it at that point in time.
Okay, I'm moving forward then.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just kind of move on. Right, you can make the presentation then?
Yeah, I can make it. I can make it then, whichever.
Yeah, just make it then.
Okay.
So twenty-five is a non-action item, and just, we'll go ahead and move on. Item twenty-six, presentation by Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins and Mott, LLP, Delinquent Tax Attorneys Firm, of the Delinquent Tax Collection Activity Report for the period from September first, twenty fifteen, through August thirty-first, twenty sixteen. Mr. Gutierrez?
Good evening, President Fuentes, Dr. Leo, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Iram Gutierrez, partner with Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins and Mott, your delinquent tax firm. I'm here to present you with your annual fiscal twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, delinquent tax report, that being the period of September first, twenty fifteen, through August thirty-first, twenty sixteen. The first four pages of the report just cover the various activities that took place in efforts to collect your delinquent taxes. I would like to point out, point you to page five of the delinquent tax report. This is where the actual collections start on the report. During this period, we have helped the school district collect over one million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in delinquent base tax, and an additional five hundred and twenty-eight thousand in penalties and interest, for a grand total of one million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And as you move to page six, we have a comparison report. During this period, we've collected twenty-seven point forty-eight percent of the collect, of the delinquent tax roll. And to the left, you see a graph that shows twenty-six point forty-three percent. That is the last full year, the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen fiscal year, that was collected fully by your prior delinquent tax firm. So as you can see, collections have gone up one point oh five percent over the same period two years ago. And I want to point out that, that is in spite of the fact that your delinquent tax roll shrunk from four million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to four million, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars this year, over two hundred thousand dollars, a smaller roll, yet we were able to collect a larger percentage of the roll.
That doesn't include fees?
Attorney's fees, no. No, those are just delinquent tax collections.
Okay.
Money that comes to the district.
Yes, sir. And Andres, you just mentioned that our goal is twenty percent on delinquent?
We try to collect more. The budget is twenty.
Twenty?
Initially, collect twenty-four, twenty-five percent.
Okay. Well, very good job. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions regarding the collections?
No.
No.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary, Mr. Fuentes?
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Section eleven, discussion and possible action items. Item twenty-seven, discussion and possible action of a revision to the agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Weslaco Inc. to provide services to Weslaco ISD students for school year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, as part of the ACE grant. I pulled this out of consent because I, I know you guys were going to have some conflicts. I know you do, and I have a conflict of interest filed as well. So Mo, I'm going to have you take the lead on this one because you have four people.
Okay. So item number twenty-seven is discussion and possible action of a revision to the agreement with Boys and Girls Club of Weslaco Inc. to provide service, services to WASD students for school year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, as part of the ACE grant. Dr. Leo?
And I will call on Ms. Benavides because Mr. Perez had been working together with Ms. Alanis and the Boys and Girls Club. I understand that the, in the original agreement, that the revision is required to clarify the duties of the Boys and Girls Club of Weslaco and the school campuses, and it's related to the curriculum materials that Boys and Girls Club was going to be training our staff on. Ms. Alanis, would you come up in case there are specific questions? Ms. Benavides, are you familiar with the revision?
My understanding is that it has already been reviewed and submitted to the Boys and Girls Club, and so pending their acceptance of our changes, it's ready for execution.
Before you continue, I'm going to actually excuse myself from this meeting. I do have to get going, so I'll let the record reflect that I'll be leaving the meeting here at six fifty-eight, and I'll pass this meeting on to Mo.
Thank you.
Okay. Happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you, Mo.
Do you have anything to add to that, Ms. Alanis?
Members of the board, Dr. Leo, the original agreement stated when we spoke with the Boys and Girls Club that they'd be providing curriculum to us. As it turned out, that it was copyrighted, so the services have changed, and the only services that they'll now be providing is an additional site coordinator at the campuses to provide the materials and the lessons to the students at the additional campuses. So that's the only change that was made.
To ensure there's no violation of copyright?
That is correct.
How many more campuses will be, participate in this program?
It's still all the same campuses. Previously, they were going to be training our ACE coordinators with the curriculum and providing the materials to them, so that the coordinators can then do the lessons with their students. But since the materials are copyrighted and can only be done by their people, they're now going to be providing Boys and Girls Club personnel to provide those lessons for students.
But so we're still providing at the different schools that were already providing?
That is correct.
Okay. It's just a revision, basically.
That's all it is.
So we approve the plan? I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Dr. Rivera, and a second by Isidoro Nieto. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to number twenty-eight, discussion and possible action to approve memorandum of understanding between Weslaco ISD and the City of Weslaco Parks and Recreation. Dr. Leo?
And I would like to call up Coach Rios to give additional information. This is a coordinated effort between the City of Weslaco Parks and Recreation and the district. Coach?
Yes, ma'am. With the addition of the, our baseball and softball programs for the middle schools, last year was our pilot program. It was only Weslaco ISD schools, so it was just our four schools competing. This year, Donna, Ed Couchelsa, and Mercedes have also joined the Mid Valley League, so that's a lot of fun, of course. Problem is that we do need to share some of the facilities so that we can accommodate all of the home games at one time, so we are going to use some of the city parks here in Weslaco to accommodate for the home games. The baseball season, only three, I think it's three weekends, the entire softball season will be, will be played at the city parks, which is a Harlem Block. The softball season, as was agreed by the entire district, the Mid Valley, is, was pushed down further, down into the spring, and it will run at the same time as the high school softball season. And that's simply because the softball season for the middle schools will run adjacent with girls soccer and not girls basketball, because there's a lot more transition in kids with, between softball and basketball than there is in soccer. And that's why we're, we're joining this venture here with the City of Weslaco.
Okay.
And I'll just interject shortly to, to let you know that if you approve this item, it's, you'll be authorizing the president to execute this agreement pending legal review.
Okay.
We haven't had an opportunity to review it yet.
Pending review?
Yes.
Okay. Coach, on, on us using their fields, will we be responsible for maintaining their fields? Are they going to maintain the fields? Are they going to make sure they're safe?
What, yes, sir. What we do is, last year we did use the fields a couple of times, especially during tournaments.
Okay.
And what happens is, we kind of work together, the city will drag the field, we will actually go out there and we'll stripe it ourselves, we will mark the lines for the, for the catcher's plate or the catcher's area and the foul ball lines.
Okay.
We will send security, and we will send our groundskeeper. It's our home game, so we will have our personnel there maintaining. Administration is there as well. Our middle school principals will be there. It's, 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 our home game is just being played at the city park.
So we've done this in the past?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other costs, like electricity or anything?
No, sir.
There's just an agreement?
Yes, sir. It's an agreement. We work together.
Did you have an agreement last year?
We did, sir. We just didn't go this, this route. It was just kind of an agreement between us, since we work with them all the time.
Okay.
But this time, since the use is going to be a little more frequent than it was in the past, we agreed to go this route, and so we started to go through the MOU route.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we may have a motion to approve by Andrew Gonzalez.
And then the review.
And a second by Isidoro. Any discussion?
Coach, I'd like to congratulate you. I know this was something that the majority of the board, all of us here, wanted to see the, the junior highs come and provide the softball and the baseball to the students of our, of our community, and bringing in the other schools like we've assumed they would.
Yes.
Take part in, and so now seeing it come to fruition is really awesome, so congratulations to you.
Thank you, sir.
And everybody in your office that helps you out, so.
Yes, thank you, and thank you guys, of course, Dr. Leo and, and the board for your support. I just had a regional meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we get together and we had visitors from the UIL from, from Austin, and we are creating a little buzz up north because we're down here in the valley, especially Weslaco, and PSJ was also one of the schools that started the Mid, Mid Valley, or the middle school softball and baseball, and it is a buzz up there, up north, and they want to pick it up up there as well, so that's a good thing, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty-nine. Well, before I move on, I would just like to thank the City of Weslaco for working with us on this. I know that there's been talk in the past that the, the school and the city are not working together, and this reflects that we, that we are. And I want to thank the City of Weslaco and Mayor David Suarez for, for working with us on this. Item twenty-nine, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the renewal of a retainer agreement with a law firm of Walsh, Gallegos, Trevino, Russo, and Kyle PC for legal services related to the provisions of special education services. Dr. Leo?
As the motion reads, we are asking for approval of renewal of the retainer agreement with this law firm. This is a firm that specializes in law related to matters involving students with, with disabilities. The firm, through this retainer, we have access to them via phone conferences. They send us legal alerts continuously by email, and they are available to us at a moment's notice if questions arise involving the education of students with disabilities. The retainer is at a cost of a thousand dollars per year. They have also assisted with other matters.
Is that the same retainer was previously?
Yes, sir.
So move.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Andrew Gonzalez, and a second by Oscar Calero. Any further discussion?
This is a very good deal. A thousand a year, I mean, you, we, we took advantage of it.
Yeah.
Now, if there's litigation, this would be separate. These are just phone calls.
Yes, but they do offer that at a, at a discount rate? I'm not sure.
They will handle the litigation.
Yes.
It's a good deal.
Yeah.
This, this firm has assisted on a few grievances, and even then, those rates have been very reasonable.
Now, how long have we been with this firm, doctor?
That, I am not sure. Mr. Garcia?
I know it's been a while, at least five years that I, from, from what I can remember.
Ten?
At least ten years? Okay, so it's just a renewal and moving forward, and everybody's happy with their services, so we have a motion, so let's, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirty, discussion and possible action to add Texas Free Market Surgery as an alternative provider for the district's self-employee, self-funded employee benefits plan, adjust benefits to allow for zero employee out-of-pocket expense. Dr. Leo?
I would like to call Mr. De La Rosa forward. It really was his initiative to bring forward this very exciting alternative option for our employees.
Good afternoon again, everybody. Dr. Leo, what the Texas Free Market Surgery Center is, it's a very innovative and unique facility that's located in Austin, Texas, and what they do is they actually publish the price of their procedures on their website before, before surgery, so everyone knows exactly what the cost is. There's no surprises, there's no hidden fees. I did, there was a presentation to the benefits committee about two weeks ago. The two founders came down from this company. One of them is one of the leading craniofacial surgeons, the other one is a former hospital CEO. And what they did was basically come together and actually figure out the true cost of healthcare and what it costs. So we see, you know, we hear horror stories from hospitals, they charge forty dollars for an aspirin, you know? So the committee was, was very, very impressed. They were all in favor of offering this facility as just an option to the employees if they were so inclined. However, as you can see by the next page, and of course, the print is a little small, and I'll go through it, the prices that they offer are extremely competitive, so competitive that we can allow for the employees to utilize this facility with zero out-of-pocket expense to them.
Mike, hold on, Mike. Carlos, is there any way, the chart that he's talking about is, can we put that up on the screen?
No, it's, it's on, it's on your.
There's no way to put it on the screen?
No, I'm just saying so that the public can see.
Unless we do the document scanner.
I mean, I have to increase it a hundred times here just so I can read it.
Well, that's why I brought my glasses. But while he's setting this up, or, I don't know how, how visible it's going to be.
It's real small.
The spreadsheet was, was, was large, and we had to, yeah, we're not going to be able to.
I can't even see it here.
No.
Maybe we can just get one example.
Yeah, pick, pick something.
Right.
Maybe one of the most common surgeries or something.
Bless you.
Excuse me.
Bless you, Doc.
Thank you.
That's a good sample.
So as you can see, there was a, an, and these are actual claims. We took twelve actual claims that we have already paid for and processed, and compared them against Texas Free Market Surgery. So as you can see here, this is a total hip replacement, including the implant. What it cost at Valley Baptist was almost sixty-six thousand dollars total, okay? Of course, the employee has a seven hundred and fifty-dollar deductible to meet, plus whatever coinsurance that they may have left, depending on what plan they have left, versus the cost at the surgery center is twenty-three thousand dollars.
Deductible still applies?
No, no, for the employee, no deductible, no coinsurance.
So the, oh, so it'll be, like you said, zero?
Zero cost for the employee. And as part of the, as part of what we're recommending is to, what we're actually asking
So the, oh, so it'll be, like you said, zero?
Zero cost for the employee. And as part of the, as part of what we're recommending is to, what we're actually asking the board to do is amend the plan to allow this facility to, uh, for the benefit, for the employees to take advantage of this facility at zero cost. And as you can tell, there's other situations or other examples for the savings. There's even enough to provide a small travel allowance to the employee to get up to Austin and get these procedures done, if they were so inclined.
Does that come through our freight insurance, or that comes through...
It would, it would come through, through, it would be filed through the third-party administrator, which is Freddy's, so...
Okay.
The employee would save their receipts, hotel, meals, gas, and we would reimburse up to a thousand dollars for travel. That's what we're asking the board to approve. I have been to these facilities. They're in the Austin Westlake area. They are top-notch. Uh, I would go there to get a, a procedure done if I needed to. So, like I said, this is just another choice, another option for the employees. They can still use whatever hospital they're so inclined. Um, but certainly, this is something that will not only save the plan money, but save the employee money as well. So it's a win-win situation for everybody.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Andrew Gonzalez. Any discussion?
No. All good?
There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Lopez, before you move on, can I, give me like two, three minutes just to say something real quick?
Sure.
Before we go to close the, close meeting. Um, well, I just wanna say that, uh, since this is my last official meeting, um, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, well, I don't know if anybody's, you know, they, they, you guys come on Thursdays for the swearing-in, but as a, uh, I just wanna say that it's been an honor serving everybody for the past four years. Um, it's been an honor, honor serving, serving with all you guys here. I think we've done a great job, and I know that you guys are gonna move forward with this district, especially, you know, um, with everybody being on the same page. Um, I wanna thank everybody here, the administrators, teachers, maintenance, everybody. Um, it's just, it was a hard decision for me to make, but I had to make it, and, you know, I had to move forward with, with my business ventures and, and, um, this time, like I said, I served in the city, and then moved to the school, so it's been, it's been a, a long journey for me. Uh, like I joke around with people, say when I got involved in politics, I was looking like Mark Rubio. Now I'm exiting looking like Bernie Sanders, so... You know, so, but, you know, it's been an honor, and I know that all you guys will do a great job and continue doing a good job. Uh, these gentlemen here, believe me, they have your back. And whatever you administrators and all you teachers and everybody, whatever you guys need, I know they're gonna be there for you, and I know you guys have done a wonderful job. And that's what makes it so hard for me to step down, and usually I'm not good with, I mean, I'm pretty good with, with words, but it's, you know, it's, uh, very emotional for me just, but, because my political ventures are coming to an end, and, um, but, like I said, never say never, but for now, they are, uh, and I wanna thank you guys for allowing me to serve you guys for the past four years, and I wish you the best of luck, and God bless all you guys.
Thank you, thank you, Adrian, for, for your sacrifice, your family's sacrifice and, and your service here, and, and if you stay longer, you might look like Colonel Sanders.
Oh, and also, um, congratulations to Weslaco. He's, I see Coach Burgett and Coach Guzman back there. Congratulations on your victory.
Congratulations, coaches.
Adrian, uh, thank you for serving for this last two years. I know I've known you since you were a basketball player at high school, so you've come a long way, and I do appreciate you serving on the board, and, uh, of course, making tough decisions over this last four years. Uh, good luck in your future.
Thank you.
And, uh, we'll see you around.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, before we move on to the next item, uh, let the record reflect that David, uh, left the meeting at six fifty-eight. Uh, now going on to item number twelve, close the meeting to discuss. Item thirty-one, Personnel Matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. Item A, Employment of Personnel, New Hires. B, Resignations. C, Deliber, Deliberation Regarding the Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment, Duties, Discipline, or Dismissal, or Proposed, Proposed Termination of a District Employee. D, Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Loan, Loan Finalists for Superintendent, Contract Negotiations, Texas Government Code 551.071. Item number thirty-two, Deliberation Regarding NAP Medical Center, Texas Government Code 551.071. And at this moment, we will go into closed session. The time is, um, seven sixteen. Time is now eight twenty-seven, and we're back in, uh, back to closed session, moving into open session. Give, uh, some time for the, for the tapes to be changed. Item number thirty-three, Possible Action if Necessary on Items Discussed in Closed Meeting. Item, um, number thirty, going back to item thirty-one, Personnel Matters, Government Code 551.074. Uh, item A, Employment of Personal, Personnel, New Hires. Dr. Leo?
Board members, we ask that you approve the new hire as recommended in executive session.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Oscar and a second by Isidoro Nieto. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Resignations. Dr. Leo?
Uh, members of the board, we ask that you approve the resignations as presented to you in executive session.
So move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Andrew. Any discussion? I just wanna thank, uh, the people that have served us, uh, served our district and, and wish them good luck on their new ventures and moving forward. Um, do we have a, can we have a motion? Do, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Deliberation Regarding Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment, Duties, Discipline, or Dismissal, or Proposed Termination of a District Employee. I believe that is a non-action item?
Correct.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Item D, Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Loan Finalists for Superintendent, Contract Negotiation, Texas Government Code 551.071. Also a non-action, non-action item. Item thirty-two, Deliberation Regarding NAP Medical Center, Texas Government Code 551.071.
I authorize legal counsel to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar. Calero?
Andrew Gonzalez, second.
Adrian.
Adrian.
Who?
Sorry, but I was like, I did this.
Okay.
Yeah, Adrian, second, I'm sorry.
Seconded by Adrian Gonzalez. Thank you for correcting me on that, Oscar.
Yes, sir.
Uh, is that, okay?
That is fine.
Okay. We have a motion and discussion on, on this item? Okay, there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, um, let's see it. All the items. Item number fourteen, Adjournment.
So move.
So move.
The time now is, uh, eight thirty-one.